Call is being ordered, please rise for the pledge of the flag. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party which stands one nation under thy God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the next item is approval on the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add or alter on the agenda?
If there's no additions or alterations, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the agenda as submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is approval of the minutes for the meeting of October the 10th, 2017.
Move motion, the minutes be approved is presented.
I'll support that.
Moved and supported to approve the minutes as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is a financial report.
First of all, could you please correct your financial report to say November 14th, not 7th? Got a little ahead of myself or behind myself on that one. We began the month with $119,419.08. We took in receipts of $5,315.26 and made disbursements in the amount of $57,596.94, leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of
I make the motion to approve the financial report as received.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the financial report as received. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Okay, the next item is correspondence. Item A is the road commission meeting. Every year, the road commission sends out a letter saying that in the summertime, one of their two monthly meetings are held in townships. And if you wish to host one, you should let them know. Unfortunately, their meeting nights are the same night as our planning commission, and we tried that once and it didn't work real well. So, we do not participate. The next item is Smart 911. I was talking to the person in charge of Central Dispatch, and they're really encouraging everyone to get information out in regards to this and what it is. If you have someone living in your home that has special needs, or maybe they're very elderly or sick, you can register with Central Dispatch to give them all the pertinent information. And if a 911 call goes to that address, they'll have it right on the screen before they ever get there. They know what they're looking for and everything else. This is all I have so far. He said he was gonna send me some more, so I'm hoping to get some. We went online, we really couldn't pull off, you know, it shows you how to register and stuff, but we really couldn't pull much off. And I'm hoping to put some kind of a blurb or something in the newsletter this year in regards to this.
Sure.
It could come in very handy.
I think we could get a link to their website so they can...
Yeah, well, if you go up to, I guess it was under the county website, wasn't it? Smart?
I wasn't...
No.
Or is it just Smart?
It's Smart and 911, and it really wouldn't do that have the link. You have to put in the information.
Yeah, you gotta register.
Register.
Yeah.
But it would take you to the site.
Yeah, we could have a link on our site that takes you to their Smart 911 site.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on. Item C, local road funding. We applied for matching money for next year with the county road commission, and our application was approved. And we've allocated a total of $50,000, up to $50,000 of which we would pay half. And we requested that to be for ditching, to be determined by number one, how much they get done this year, and what comes up in the spring. So, this is just a notification that our application was approved for next year. Okay, moving on. Old business, grant update. You remember a couple months ago, we were given the score on our acquisition grant, and it wasn't great, so we resubmitted some, like an addendum to it, and our score went up appreciably. And so, I'm pretty optimistic. We went from 240 to 350 out of 500. Mr. Bunch from Six Rivers sent us an email saying that New Baltimore had one for 2.3 million two years ago that they have been able to do, and if that money gets back into the trust fund, we'll be even more likely to get it.
Now, what were some of the factors that boosted our score?
You know, well, you got 50 bonus points. So, that's my biggest...
Trailways, the trailways points?
Well, the trust fund board came from, gave us 50 points. That's all. So, that's what leads me to believe that we're gonna get it. We had the trailways, we got communication from China and East China that even though today it's not open, it's definitely gonna be a part of the ways. And I don't know, there was three things altogether that we adapted. And we got some more information from Six Rivers, more, and put that in. So, it would've gone from 240 to 300, but then we got an extra 50.
Sounds great.
We'll know in December.
Yeah.
Soon.
Good news.
Better than 240.
Yes.
Okay, moving on. New business, item A. The state says that every township has to appoint a construction board of appeals to a two-year term. We had three gentlemen that was serving, their terms have expired. I contacted all three, and they said yes, they would serve again, so we need a motion by the board to appoint these gentlemen to a two-year term on the appointment, or to the construction board of appeals.
I make a motion to appoint to a two-year term to following individual, Mr. Larry Ballard, Mr. Robin Carras, and Mr. Steve Nickel. Is that how they say it?
Yeah.
Support.
Okay, moved and supported to appoint the three gentlemen to the construction board of appeals for two-year term. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is the county drain assessment for 2017. And you have a copy of it, and we're being billed for work on two drains, the Casco and the Benoit. In total for the year for us is $3,120, which is pretty low as it usually goes.
Yeah.
It will be more next year because they have done considerable work on two drains this year, but they're not assessing it till next year. So, it's much better than last year when we spent $130,000. So, we need a motion.
We definitely approved the assessment of $3,120 of support of the work on the drains.
Moved and supported to approve the assessment from the county drain commission for the amount of $3,120. Is there any discussion? We have a roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Phil?
Hi.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item C, priority towing request. And the first thing I would do about this was last year when a gentleman from a neighboring township called and asked if we would submit his name as a priority on the towing list. And I said, "Well, the fact you're not in our township?" "No." So then, I don't know, about six, eight weeks ago, Jeremy, who is the only towing company in our township, called and asked if we would do it for him. And since the other townships are doing it for their companies, I did not see a problem with it. So, I talked to the sheriff, Captain King. And what it is, is when they go out to an accident, they have a list, and you have to be an approved towing company to get on that list. And normally, they start at the top, and the first guy that says, "Yep, I can do it," they come and do it. But apparently, if you ask them, they can put calls in your township, they can prioritize a company.
I see.
So, we drafted this letter, I called Captain King again, read it to him, and he said that would suffice, and basically I ordered it so that it's priority for companies plural located in Casco, so if somebody else opens one up, they're covered. And then I mentioned Jeremy, and he's on one half.
He's 24/7?
Yep. And he does have an approved storage yard. Now, that is in Columbus, right across the border, across 32, that was his old location. Because our zoning did not allow a towing yard where he is.
Right. And these guys all work together. I had to get my truck, I called a burgess. He was busy, so he called a guy from Marysville. I worked on grasses all this time last year.
One can do a thing.
Yeah. In fact, he called, burgess called the guy from Marysville.
And I don't know how many calls they get where this would apply, but since the other townships have, getting requests from their companies, I thought it was reasonable.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, do you need a motion on this?
Yep.
I make a motion that we select Jeremy and any other, you know, one that may form towing services within Casco Township to be our priority towing company.
That's good.
So, this is, this is what's going to the sheriff, so...
Okay. I hear that good.
That's good enough.
That's the point, yeah.
Moved and supported to request that the county sheriff place townships, or towing companies located in our township, and give a priority for calls in our township. Any discussion?
Burgess used to be in Casco.
Yeah.
I know. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Item B, Homeland Security. Oh, it's been over a year since the lady from Homeland Security sent me the three resolutions that, you know, they recommend you approve. I gave you the spreadsheet to show who, what township and city in St. Clair County has approved them. And you can see it under the NIMS. Most have, all but a couple. We actually approved it back in, says '06. I thought it was later than that, but... And the other two we have not, and the majority of the townships have not. And I really don't know why. Probably, even though the one says they cannot cause you to spend any money without your approval, I think it's a matter of, because the one that lists a fire department, and we have no control over a fire department. Or maybe something that, you know, they want commitments that are gonna cost you money because you don't have the resources in your township that a larger township would have. So, I put them on the agenda today, put them in the packet so you can read them over. If you want to get more information, I can certainly have Nikki or somebody else come to the board meeting in December. If you need, or you just want me to get more information, I can do that. If you wanna act on all three, we can do that, or we can act on just any of the...
Are the purpose of all these to give, I mean, to give you, is the chief operating officer of this community more jurisdiction or authority over emergency services that come here, or...
I think the biggest priority is probably it helps them in grades.
Okay.
Now, we do have a list that, we have a liaison, that's Mr. Bumgarden. We do give them a list that lists everybody in our township that's responsible for something. Okay, like our building inspector, I forget the heading, but it's for damage assessment or something. Something else, I know Colleen something. So, they have that list. But when we had big power hours last year, they called me, they wanted to know if they could use the hall for a warning center. And I said, you know, "If you need it, you can use it, but we're not set up for cots." You know, at that time, I guess we were, I don't know, we might've been in the new hall, but we really don't have a kitchen area for large amounts of stuff. But I said, "I'm not, you know, school would be much more appropriate. You have a lot of square foot, a lot of cots, big kitchen area." But I said, "If you need us, yeah, we'll open the doors for you." And apparently, they didn't need us, so they were bad for me. So, how beneficial it is, I don't know.
Yeah.
You can ask Mr. Bumgarden, went to the meeting, what was that, month or two ago?
Yeah. Well, you've covered most of the stuff about the resolutions and stuff, but Jeff Freeland, he got up there and spoke too, and they learned a lot in that last five-day windstorm when people were out of power. Actually, they failed. Even their generator went down. And they're working on getting like a list together or something on a webpage about gas stations where they're open, so you can get gas for your generator. They're gonna, working on, you know, who's ever open, they're gonna be on that list. You can just look on there and say, "Well, yeah, this gas station's open, they have gas. You go there, get gas." Same as restaurants. If, you know, you can't cook at home, you got no power, you can, you know, get a list of, you know, the restaurants that are open, go get something to eat. And, you know, stuff like that. They're, you know, they're working on, I mean, they learned a lot in that last windstorm, that five-day outage. They found out a lot of things, you know, as far as where you can get fuel from and stuff like that. So, it was a good awakening.
I would like to know what they have mind, if we have, let's say, a massive ice storm or something, and we have a lot of people affected, especially people who are elderly or that, are there like warning centers? Do they plan to use the elementary school there, or the, I think, or the schools in Richmond, or the high school?
Yeah, that's another thing they wanna do, to have a list of your warning center.
I think us as the board, we should, hey, be saying that we know about the county plan for us, because people may even call your office here, and it would be helpful to say, "Hey, yep, we know the county has this plan, you know, the, was it County Line Elementary? That's what we're gonna call it." Yeah.
To some extent, though, you can't even plan that ahead, because most of the schools don't have backup generators. So, they have to go with the flow, you know, where are the lights out, if that's the case, and then where are the lights in. And then they'll have a list of all the schools that are in the area with electricity.
Yeah.
And disseminate that to the police or the fire or whatever.
Maybe we should have the representative from the county come here, and we could ask them these questions, saying...
Well, let's ask them, do they have their list complete? Do they, do they have up-to-date pertinent information? So, you're not giving bad information.
If these resolutions will help Homeland Security get money for grants, why not go ahead and approve them? Why hold them up so they can move forward?
Because the one, I think, even says that participation will be used in grant applications. The other one didn't say that.
Well, still, if it helps them, why not just go ahead and approve them?
Would one month matter on these?
No, I've had them for a year.
Okay. Yeah, I'd say get a vote of Nikki, never come out, she could explain a lot.
You wanna hold that until January then, or what? What do you wanna do, December? What do you wanna do?
Yeah, December would be fine.
Sure. Yeah. I'll see what I can do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Moving on. Item E. Most years, we swap holidays so that we're holidays the day before Thanksgiving. Unfortunately, this year, the day we usually swap came on Saturday. So, the feeling is that it's still like have the office closing, and we did this last year.
So moved.
Thank you, Joe. Support.
Okay, so your motion was to close the offices November 22nd?
That's right.
Right.
Okay.
Nice for them.
Moved and supported to close township offices on November 22nd. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Next item is payment of the bills.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bills as submitted.
Support. Moved and supported to pay the bills. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Hi.
Pat?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Dave?
Motion carries. Moving on, citizens' comments. This is your opportunity to address the board with comments or questions. We request your name for the record, but if you don't wanna give it, I don't have to.
Yeah, we'd like to hear from them, isn't it?
Okay. Yeah.
Gerald Keller-Casko.
Gerald?
Gerald. You shouldn't have it like public knowledge to, if you're gonna rent your property, so every citizen has a chance to bid on it.
It was a couple of years ago.
Well, you should do it every year.
No.
So, it's fair.
Okay.
Why not? Well, the first, the first year, we did it for two years, because it was all brush.
Right.
Okay. Then the agreement, it says that the current runner, if he lets you know, and he pays for it before December 31, he can run it the following year with board approval. So, we approved it last month. He's gonna be in within before December 31 to pay us, and he's good for another year. Not gonna get, not gonna get big jumps in rent.
Well, if someone else wants the opportunity to rent.
Well, when you're getting what it's worth, and he takes good care of the place, that counts too.
So, your favorite?
My favorite? No, he was high, he was high bidder.
But you're not offering it to other residents?
We did.
We did. We had 10 bids.
Each year?
No.
No, nobody really wanted to rent that property.
Well, I'm sitting here because...
He wants to rent, that's why.
Anyway.
That's why I'm here. It is what it is.
Can I ask a quick question on that? Because are you renting to the guy that cleaned up the brush?
Yes.
So, when he originally rented it, he went in and he cleaned it up, and that was on a good faith knowledge that he was going to be able to continue to rent it.
But that's not a ten-year contract.
No, but that's a good faith thing. That's like helping out your neighbor, because they're gonna be your neighbor for a long time.
But you're not, you're not in debt to him for the rest of your life.
No, no.
It should be available to other townships.
Yeah, no, I agree that it should be limited, but I mean...
There should be an agreement.
You have to understand where they're coming from, too.
Right, but it's not a lifetime.
No, not a lifetime. I wouldn't say a lifetime, but...
Should be, it should be available to other residents.
Right, yeah. After a certain amount of time.
You said two years?
The first one, we did two years, because we knew the first year, you had to clean all the brush.
Right.
Okay.
Understandable.
Two years just came up, now we're going into a one year for next year.
But I'm saying that future years shouldn't be...
And I know what the going rate of rent is, and I know how good that property is. He's paying good amount.
Way more than he should.
Okay, but what if after that one year, you open it up for a bid? Chance to bid. Come January 1st, you, you know, at that board meeting, you allow people to bid on it.
That's all I'm saying.
I mean, that's, I'm not saying you have to do it this year, but you said you're giving them another year, give them that year, and then Jan, you know, January 1st or whatever, okay, we're opening it to public bid, and then you start all over again. Because then he's had the property for so many years, and you can give somebody else the same opportunity to do the same thing and improve it more, maybe.
Generally, farmers...
I understand, I come from a farming family, I get what you're saying, but I also get what he's saying, where just because he got his foot in the door that one time...
Yeah, but he cleaned the mess up, too.
Yeah, and I, a lot, yeah.
I'm young, just getting there.
No, and he...
I'm not getting, you know?
No, a lot of, no, and he cleaned, he cleaned it up, and that's why I'm saying, he should've had, you know, that's why he's had the past two years, and he gets the extra year without any competition, but...
Yeah, but what happened when they originally leased it? What was everybody there?
Maybe they didn't, maybe he didn't know. Yeah. And, yeah, and again, it doesn't mean he...
They tear, they tear woods down now.
It doesn't mean he gets a lifetime contract because he cleaned up some woods.
Just, just so you know, like consumers rent property to everybody.
Yeah.
As long as you pay the rent that they request the next year, you get it again.
Well, you're not consumers, you're Casco Township.
Every year, every two years, every...
You're not consumers energy, you're Casco Township.
Doesn't matter, it's the same principle.
Really?
Now, if I wanted more money for, and he didn't want to pay it...
They aren't open.
Then I could say no, and I will go, and they'll go up for bids.
So, as long as you keep saying yes, you're gonna keep giving it to them?
It's a board decision.
The board does, I don't. I recommend to the board.
Well, right, but...
How many farmers do you know that have rented property for 20 years from the same guy?
There's a lot of farmers out there that steal property from other farmers, and they know that.
And what do they think of people that steal? What do they say about people that steal?
Well, you're renting to one that steals it.
He doesn't steal it from us.
He steals property from other people. So, it's like fair game out there, Billy, that's what I'm saying.
What do you mean by stealing property?
They'll go and cutthroat other farmers and offer higher rent, and steal properties from other farmers.
So, now you wanna do that.
Why not join the game? I'm just getting in it.
We're doing good on the...
I guess the question is, is it an option to open it up to open bidding at a different time?
The board wants to make in.
Okay.
Our money, so we have to, we're gonna open up a business, we gotta put it in the paper.
Right.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I just, I guess that is the main question, is it going to be open for...
Well, and there's costs involved with doing that. They have to issue you a copy of their insurance that, you know, you're held harmless in case something happens. It's not a simple matter, just saying...
No, it's not, but...
Give you some money. So, it's a year-to-year deal.
With municipalities rent properties, do they put them down?
I don't think they have. We could check. I'm thinking they're, they do like he says, they, as long as they keep paying, they let it run.
And we didn't want to get into a long-term deal, because originally, that was gonna be park property, and we don't know if we're getting another property for the park.
Not allowing them to try.
Well, maybe we'll turn it back into park property.
You won't. Okay, something to think about.
So, we have a year to take your request under advisement?
Yes.
I think we should talk about it again.
Okay. Okay, anybody else have anything?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to say that if, if anyone with a smartphone has not downloaded, downloaded the Nextdoor app, you should. Because it has, I mean, Wayne was the one that turned us all onto it, and I mean, there has been a wealth of knowledge going on, on that thing. I shared something this week, just, and it wasn't anything that I normally would've shared on Facebook or anything, but I just happened to be taking my daughter to the bus and noticed something weird. And then this weekend, somebody got broke into. I don't know if they're connected, they could be, but there's that thing that we can all watch out, and we can all talk to each other without having to talk to each other. Um... Exactly, descriptions of cars, people, just anything weird. Or, I mean, they had the rummage sale for St. Paul's, there's a, there's a wealth of knowledge on there, and it's different than Facebook, because it's just the community. Yeah, it's just the community. And so, if you haven't been on Nextdoor, get on that. And I wanna thank Colleen for keeping us all up today on the park stuff, because I'm super stoked.
Hey, I gotta say, Joe.
Probably got Lindsay from our house.
Okay, just if you don't do it, you can go online to the Times-Herald, and even if you don't subscribe, you can get six minutes. And they do put the central dispatch calls in there, online, and you can see if any police were called to Casco Township the day before, and for why they were called. But you have six, you have six minutes to do it. Then they cut you off unless you pay a subscription.
Six minutes.
There's only about six minutes of information that's worth it.
For six minutes.
Yeah.
Now, there's been some break-ins in last couple of weeks or whatever.
Oh, yeah, there was one last week, and they're still out and about.
Yep, they're still breaking in.
Do you wanna report on neighborhood wise?
Yeah, I was waiting to see if everyone was down there, we're gonna shift it over.
Are we doing another meeting, please?
We are, the next, hopefully, the next couple of weeks, as soon as I can get a hold of the sheriff again. But anyways, our last meeting, I was very pleased with the attendance we had. I think we had probably about 40-plus people here.
Oh, yeah.
We had 228 hits on YouTube, people watching it, which was good, how other townships, neighborhoods could watch it, see what was going on here. which was good, how other townships, neighborhoods could watch it and see what was going on here. And hopefully, like you say, in the next couple of weeks, get another meeting together and maybe get another speaker here to inform what's going on and keep the show on the road.
The sheriff deputy did a good job.
He did.
Giving very good practical advice to the residents.
I forgot. I have one more thing. I forgot. Because I know Colleen got on Facebook and answered my friend's question on Facebook, but somebody asked me about paving Meisner Road. Are they, are, is it happening? Like, that's what's gonna happen, or...
I'd say it's better than 50/50 to do Melstrom to church next year. They're ditching it this year to prepare it, but I don't believe next year's budget has been finalized yet. I know it's their intent to do it, but it depends on, you know, if they find, suddenly find a
Bridge.
Bad bridge or something. What? Yeah. So it is their intent, and then hopefully, if you see them ditching between church and the freeway next year, you'll know the next year, then they'll finish. But it's always money.
Okay, yeah. I just had somebody ask me about it, and I remember using it because I had the last meeting like mentioning it, but I didn't know that was for sure.
I would say it's better than 50/50 if all things work out. Now, in 19, the county's supposed to be getting more money from the increased gas tax that went in this year. The first two years, M.D.A. took over. But in 19, they're supposed to get some extra money, so hopefully, worst case, that by then they can do that. So I can't speak for the road committee.
What's going on with the easement they're building on that corner?
On which one?
The easement that they were looking for you
Oh.
For the property there.
They haven't got back? They called.
So they ditched right up to it.
Currently, the township owns two acres on the corner of church and Meisner, was the old schoolhouse. And they called, wanted to know if we could give them a 10-foot easement to make a big ditch. So when they do the ditching on Meisner, they could get over to that Teltow drain that runs around there. And I said, "Yeah, I'm sure we can work something out," but they've never gotten back. Don't know. Anybody else have anything? Hearing nothing, just hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving. And if you're going deer hunting tomorrow, good luck.
Stay out of my...
Yeah, stay out of the woods.
Yeah, stay, stay out of my woods.
I'll be a more...
Make a motion to adjourn?
Moved and supported to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Stand adjourned.
Bye, guys.